And we're live.
To order at six thirty and all organize your pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take note that five of the six board members are present. One of them is absent as we see his health of town. Mr. Volchay is here, as well as several members of the audience. The agenda approval on the safety panel, was there anything, any updates to the agenda?
Yeah, we had talked at policy committee. So, item number fourteen on the agenda, internet acceptable use and safety.
Number fifteen.
Is it fifteen?
Fifteen, yep.
Let me get the revised agenda.
There you go.
Number fifteen, internet acceptable use and safety. There was a change due to a change in the law. And so the policy committee thought they would give the board members a little bit more time to review that and give us an opportunity to do that again in August since it wasn't urgent, so.
And then, I think it was also.
Yep, and then the third reading of policy five oh four, student dress and appearance. We went through that, had some discussion on it. There were a couple of recommendations from the high school administration to change some of the wording on the policy. And so I think when we, we're not going to approve that tonight. We're gonna, I think the policy committee decided to.
We're calling this from the third reading and we'll approve it at our next meeting.
At our next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have the staff complete their research and kind of get their verbiage in there. We know what we want to come out, but to add back in.
Yep.
And we're getting a lot of work.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. And so, alright, so chairman, yep. Table number fifteen and the number five oh four, third reading from number seventeen. Approve the agenda with those changes. Okay. Motion made to approve the agenda as amended, is there a second?
Second.
Second by man, any further discussion? Seeing now, I was in favor, sitting about to say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Next up Mustang Spirit recognition. Didn't, oh, aye. See, friend is.
I didn't submit anything, but I was hoping I could.
Pushing on that, let me plug that.
Like that?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright, I apologize for being greasy. I've been flipping burgers at the Lions food booth for the, I got a six hour shift today, so if you're hungry after this, come visit us at the fair. I wanted just to let you know, board members, about something I saw happen mid-June, pretty amazing. Some of you maybe know, but last year, Mr. Baki was nominated as assistant principal for the central division. And he won that central division. Then, at the, the winners from all the divisions compete for the state assistant principal of the year. And our principal for Mora, right over there, he is the state assistant principal of the year. Very deserving, I work close with him, I see his dedication, tons of hours and leadership that he puts into our, our school and our community. But, what I wanted to share with you is, when you win the state assistant principal of the year, you have to give a speech. And the summer conference was exactly about a month ago. And Mr. Baki gave a speech in front of a lot of people. And when he was done, there was a standing ovation. And for the next day, I had principal after principal coming up to me and saying, "He told us exactly what we needed to hear." The last couple of years of COVID, we're so hard on leadership. His speech was what the doctor ordered. It was a long speech, you can't keep that guy short, you know, Mr. Baki. But, standing ovation, people asked me, "Can you please thank him for all that he's done?" Just wanted you guys to know that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I had Mustang Spirit Award and some people that don't, maybe aren't in the limelight, but are still working this summer, and that's a custodial group. They are probably doing one of the most important jobs, is to get our school district clean and prepared for students and staff to come in, in the fall again. So I'd like to give the Mustang Spirit to the custodial group.
Thank you, there you go, the custodial staff, yeah. We definitely know in the summer, they're busy all year, especially this summer, that they can do things that they can't. Give that to the rest of the year, so thank you. Any other Mustang Spirits? Alright, seeing them, we'll move on to open four one. I don't see anybody out there, or I don't think there was any blue cards. And seeing them, we'll move on then to the new high school building project update.
Alrighty. Shane, you get the PowerPoint. This better?
Yeah.
Shane, are we hearing the PowerPoint? Yeah, so progress for the new Mora High School building project. Most of you had the tour earlier, I think it was a successful tour. Run through construction update with photos, touch on budget stadium, and then a few other additional items. With that, project is maintaining its overall spot. Great spot right now as we move into August. Moving along quickly, we're within budget on schedule. Working on getting our building enclosure here for the winter. Finishing up our roofing system here, next week should be finishing all of roofing systems throughout the building. Continue our brick installation in the locker room areas and office areas for the next month or so. Continually pouring floors, should be pretty close to pouring floor by the end of August. We have paving at the end of next week to complete the base course paving around the entire site. And then other items continually, interior construction, framing, starting some finishes in the locker room areas. And then, next summer, occupy new high school and move in. With that, a few photos here of the locker room areas, photo on the right, ceilings in the bathrooms are completed. Tile is starting next week for the bathroom groups in the locker room areas. Paintings started this week as well. So those are some of the first areas that are getting some finishes done. Catwalk installation in the auditoriums moving along, a few more weeks left in there. Really starting to take some nice shape and form with the catwalk being installed. Kitchen area, lower commons kitchen area, framing's done, working on mechanical roughing and electrical roughing items. Underground plumbing and electric throughout the whole building, we're finished with our underground now, as of just yesterday, other than the auditorium, so. Working on final grading in floors and then continue pouring out those classroom areas and CTE area through August. Drone photos, these are all three weeks old now. Drone photo from the south end of the football field, main entrance here. Back entrance, we're working on windows along that hole, eastern half now, up in the CTE area, auditorium, classroom areas. Curbing has been completed now, they're working on final grading for the paving next Thursday, Friday. It'll be at the track, as well as the remaining access road along the back and receiving areas. And another shot from Ninth Street here. I have a slide here, there is, Bob has mentioned conduit availability for the power coming from the CTE area to tennis courts for future lights. Budget wise, contingency remaining for the high school project, six hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seven. We have been moving along on value engineering updates. We, out of our over half a million dollar goal, we are just one thousand dollars away from reaching that goal. So it's moving along good, should have that wrapped up and continually making efforts for value engineering for the project. Included slide here for the, kind of an update for the stadium and fields breakdown. We had initial budget of our million dollars, five hundred and ten thousand was initially contracted for practice fields, field grading site work and design, which will remain in stadium and field elements, budget of four hundred and ninety thousand. Three hundred and thirty which is committed to bleachers, hundred and thirty to press box, four hundred and five thousand for lighting relocation. And we had three additional items for the foundation for the bleachers, sidewalk skirting around the bleachers, and then some added fence for more practicality and control. Turf overall, proposal currently, as it states, four hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-two is the updated and final cost there for the turf. Next slide has the finalized turf design. And the last few miscellaneous items, we are in process on putting together kind of a task list schedule for the demo and relocation from the existing school. So we'll have that put together here in the next few weeks for review. Getting our eyes set on, you know, that last kind of phase for the overall scope here with that existing property. And then just a safety update, overall, safety wise for the project, it's going really, really well. You know, not a whole lot of things that are sticking out, a few minor things, but we do have ICS safety director visiting site a minimum once a month. We have a third-party consultant also visiting once a month to do safety audits throughout the site. And then we have OSHA consultations quarterly, so we get OSHA involved on a quarterly basis to get a site review and be proactive with safety in that regard for the overall site safety. What's next, we have our leadership oversight's monthly. As mentioned, August, continue our exterior windows, finish up wall construction, continue pouring slabs throughout the classroom areas, and we'll continue interior construction behind that. Stadium field construction, turf slated mid-August for beginning installation. And continually existing planning for the demo and relocation from current high school. So that's what I got today, any questions?
Could I ask, could you go back to the outdoor field? Is that what it's going to permanently look like? Or is it easily interchangeable to whatever sport goes on on that turf field?
That's the, I mean, painted marks can be put on, but that's the stitched in final turf layout.
So it's always going to be looking like a football field?
Yep.
Yep.
Good. So there's no future plan for soccer or, because that's a different size as far as.
Yes, the soccer pitch is a different size, but you'd have to, if we would ever have that, you'd have to put in some temporary lines, chalk lines or paint lines or whatever, to get a pitch, you know, to make it a soccer pitch, but something like that, we might actually have it, put it more on. Practice field, JV field where it's just more grass and it's easier, because this is a permanent, obviously a turf is permanent, and that's why, you know, we have, there's a whole lot less upkeep, but, you know, it'll take the wear and tear better, but you can't adapt it around.
Was that the plan all the time? And I wasn't part of that, but I thought that the stadium area was going, supposed to be able to be multi-use.
Yes, it is.
With all the scene, not just football. But it is just football?
As far as markings go, yes, it is just set up for that. But it's, for FIA, you can do, you know, whatever, but as far as marking, we don't have a soccer team, so it's.
But nobody's really allowed on the official football field, correct?
What was that?
I didn't think people were allowed on the football field, or you tried to answer that, I don't know.
When it's on. On a turf field, it's going to be used daily.
Daily, yes. When it's grass, then we can't, and that's why we went with turf, because then we can use it every day for gym, every day for whatever. It'll take the wear and tear. If it's grass or turf, not turf, I mean, if it's grass, then you can't, because you just tears it up too much.
The insulation of it. Correct, yeah, we'll be able to practice on it.
Yeah.
Where, so we got, we were having one less field than what we typically would have had if it was grass. We would have had to add another grass field.
And I'm just wondering if other sports, other activities that we're going to be on.
Yeah, the track's going to be running, your track on that.
Soft.
They're going to be jumping there, they're going to be, yeah, so there's.
But it's not interchangeable with any other sport.
It can be adapted to.
It could be adapted to that. It could be adapted to nine-man football, if we wanted to host a nine-man football playoff game, we could make the lines for nine-man football. It could be used for, it could be used for soccer, but if we don't have a soccer team, it's kind of, I don't know what the cost would be to put down lines for soccer, but.
Could, if I could just speak for FIA, I used to be a FIA teacher, so like for soccer, that's a sport that every FIA teacher in the state, they teach that. This is really ideal, because in FIA, you don't want to play one big game on the whole field. You want as many kids getting as much participation as possible. So if I was a FIA teacher, I would do three games, north and south right here, up and down, and I would actually use those yard lines as my sideline. So this is really ideal for a FIA teacher.
Any other questions, Evan? Okay, thank you for the tour guide, it was great, and so did so, I see that, you know, the progress going on, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all. Moving on, Katie, we're in Spanish club.
Troy.
I'm sorry, yes, I was going to skip Troy. No, that's what I get for taking the glasses off and all of a sudden jump line for me, Troy! Thank you, Katie, good morning, man.
Thanks, Coach.
Yeah, is this on or?
Uh, yep, it's on.
Okay.
Packet that I have in front of you, I apologize, there's supposed to be two more pages in it, and I will cover those two pages, and it'll be in, on the file, and I'll leave these two. When I made my copies quick before football camp, I must have left one page out of the printer, so I apologize for that. But the information is still all here on the, on the stuff that you have, so. You already looked at the field, we talked about that itself, but there's, there's the picture on paper of what the field will look like. As of today, three hundred and forty, boy, my eyes are getting tired. Forty-six thousand, forty-eight? Three hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars pledged, equally in eighty-seven point one percent of our goal of four hundred thousand dollars. You can see on the pie chart how that all lays out. This is how it's laying out as far as per square yard on the football field, how much space is still available for the five hundred and thirty square yards a football field has. And then total in our account so far is ninety-three thousand fifty dollars. And I had, and I'll have this, Tammy printed it out for me, and that, that'll go in the packet going into the special file. Questions?
Any questions? Any questions for Troy? Alright, I guess done, thank you so much.
Thank you, I'm going back to practice.
Now, Katie, come on up for your presentation. Yeah, everybody, you got an email to us earlier as well, so, thank you, Katie.
Well, these are just a few of our pictures from the Spain trip we took in June going into July. We had ten students and basically seven chaperones, so it was a pretty good student to chaperone ratio. Felt pretty confident going in that if we had any issues, we would have somebody to take care of them. But we did not have any COVID issues, we didn't really have any huge snafus in our trip, except for our flight was delayed one hour, or maybe three or four hours going to Spain that night, the first night that we got there, and then on the way back, we also had second hour flight delay coming back to Minnesota. But besides that, we were not impacted by COVID or flight delays, and a lot of things were going on in the US at the time that we didn't have to deal with. So, logistically, it went really well. We did everything we set out to do, plus a few more things, and we stayed under budget, so. Here are a few of the things we did. Well, you can see where Iceland is, that's the first place we went, and then we went to Spain, and then the Canary Islands, and then back to Iceland. So, on to the next slide, I will be brief. On our way there, we stopped at Blue Gud, which is a product of the geothermal plant they put in in Iceland. Because of the silica in the water, it colors it kind of a milky white-blue color. And so it's basically a spa, it was very relaxing. And maybe too relaxing, some of us did fall asleep in the airport, because we did have that very long delay. And, but it was good, we had a good time. Then we went to Spain, we spent a few days in Madrid, like four days. We didn't get to enter the Royal Palace unfortunately, because a couple of weeks before the trip, we were informed that it was going to be taken over for some royal event, so our booking was canceled. So we had to go to some other things, and we went to the museum of anthropology, or archaeology, sorry. And we did a few other activities there, so we were busy, we did a couple of day trips. And then we wound up in Toledo, which is the next slide. Segovia was one of the day trips we took on the left in Toledo. We did zip lining, across the Tapa River, we stayed in a really cool posada, which had underneath it, the Roman sewer system actually was running underneath it from the year two hundred. So everything in Spain is very, very old, which is really cool for the kids to see. Just to experience how things are so different in another country, so that was really fun. They got to practice their Spanish in Almena de la Hoja. So those are the Spanish students on the right-hand side, we did a little classroom lesson, they were teaching us some slang expressions. We also had them as our guides when we toured Medina, which is a Roman city in southwestern Spain, which used to be me mendi dos, which, which means retired. So it was the place where retired Roman generals went after retirement, so there's a Colosseum, there are some temples. It's a really cool place, and that was a fun trip, and you can see some of the students that were with us. A few of the students stayed with host students, and that was, that was actually impacted by COVID, because usually we have everybody staying with host families, but, but I wasn't sure how that was going to go. And so it did wind up, we could get a few students with host families, and so we did, but some of them were actually staying in Medina with myself and the other chaperones, so that's how that went. Then we went on to Sevilla, we took a Carri ride, we saw flamenco performance, we saw the cathedral, students climbed the Heralda Tower, and spent a couple of days there, and from there we flew to the Canary Islands. So we visited San Cristobal de la Laguna, which is, which is a historic city. In fact, it was the city that was the, kind of the blueprint for the Spanish colonization of Latin America. So if you look at Latin American cities, they look a lot like San Cristobal de la Laguna, because that was kind of the Spanish colonization plan. That's actually the, that were tradition's house that we're, that we're at, with the picture on the left. We toured Anata Forest, which is like the Lloris Silva forest in, in kind of the hills. It's kind of like a rainforest, but cooler, as in not as high of temperature. It is very rainy though, so I think if there was one thing I would do differently about the trip is warning students that we really actually need several days of cold weather clothing, because we probably didn't have quite enough cold weather clothing for the Canary Islands, I thought. I knew they were going to be a little bit chilly, but we definitely had temps in the seventies, maybe in the sixties in the forest, it was, it was with the rain, it was pretty brisk. So we did like a five K hike through that forest, up and down hills. It was strenuous, but it was not hot. So moving on, we were also in Santa Cruz, we took a tour of kind of the northern edge of the island, and we went to the city of Ico de los Menos, and just kind of saw the, the different villages in the island, and they're, it's just very different from Spain. Even though it belongs to Spain, the Canary Islands definitely have more of a Latin American flavor, which was unique for the students to see and experience. And then I think there's maybe one more, yeah. So Iceland's Golden Circle was the last tour that we did. We did see the Goldfoss Waterfall, that's the Carrick Crater. I'm probably not saying all these things correctly, because Icelandic is really hard to pronounce. But, yeah, we saw a lot of, a lot of cool things in Iceland as well, and just kind of did the bus tour on the way back, so. So, yeah, it was also pretty chilly there, that was probably mid-fifties or sixty or something, it was not warm either. But, yeah, so, so it was nice not to be burdened by the really hot temperatures that Spain usually has. Generally, when we're in Spain, it's a hundred, a hundred-ten. We hit super high temperatures, and I'm worried about kids, you know, having a hard time due to heat exhaustion. And we've had that, you know, kids had to stay in their hotel room, because they just couldn't make a day, they had to just rest and cool down. That was not the issue that we had in Spain this time, I don't know what happened, but we brought the cold Spain, and that was when you guys here at home were having the huge heat wave in the nineties. We were in Spain enjoying, you know, eighties, and, you know, the week or two before, it was in the hundreds in Spain. And a couple of weeks after, it went back to hundreds, but when we were there, it was nice. And so, so, yeah, it was kind of unique that way. Usually it doesn't work out for us, but that was one of the reasons why I chose the Canary Islands, because like we, as Minnesotans, have a hard time dealing with a hundred-ten degree heat. So it definitely was cooler, but we need more sweatshirts next time. So any questions about the trip?
It looks fantastic.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes.
Yeah, we did a lot of things, honestly, everybody was pretty much ready to go home and sleep, because it was intense. It really is very intense when you're in another country or two other countries for seventeen days, and we're doing something every day, there really wasn't, there weren't too many times where we did nothing. Like the very last day in the Canary Islands, they could go to the beach or do whatever. The adults went golfing that day in the morning, and, you know, the kids could go to the beach, they could relax in their room, they could pack. A couple of students and I went whale watching, we got a really good deal for twenty euros. We got on a boat and got up to see some dolphins and pile of whales and such. So, you know, it was, that was our laid-back day, but there weren't very many of them. But I guess, you know, you go there once and you pack as much in as you can, because you're probably not going to be back anytime soon, so. Yeah, it was, it was good, kind of exhausting, but looked good.
I think it was so wonderful to see those smiles, that is what does it for me.
Those might be smiles from cold on the left. Might be grimaces. It was chilly. And you can see it was windy, too. So, yeah. Iceland is not warm, even in the summer. So, gotta come prepared. And they they told us when we put our bags in at the airport that we would not have access to our checked bags. So, we had to do a really quick, get anything that's cold, cold weather into your into your carry-on bag, because you're not gonna have access to it. So, before we checked our bags, we got our sweatshirts out. So, that's just good to remember for next time, that even though you're stopping in Iceland and spending the night in Iceland, you will not get your bags. So, good to know. So, moving on to the Ecuador proposal, if there are no other questions. So, the reason behind the Ecuador proposal is is mostly because, as you know, our trips were delayed. So, the German trip was actually delayed a couple of years, and the Spanish trip was delayed one year. So, due to that delay, we both wound up traveling the same year, which doesn't usually happen. It has not historically happened. And it's nice to not have that happen, just logistically. So, she does her more intense fundraising one year, and then I do my more intense fundraising the next year. And even though our fundraising doesn't necessarily overlap, it's just nice to not, like, all be fundraising at the same time. So, to get back on track, I think, I did have a few students that wanted to go to Ecuador and the Galapagos. So, I'm like, well, I'll propose it and see what happens. And going back to back, for me, you know, it's it's a little challenging, because that's like two summers in a row. And it's really pretty much, you know, a whole month between the planning and then really getting ready and then going and then recuperating. So, so, it's definitely not something I would probably want to do every single year in a row. But if I did it next year, then German club could do it the year after, and we'd be back on our, you know, every other year schedule, which would be really, really nice, I think, for both of us. And so, this is very similar to the trip that we took last time when we went to Ecuador. You can see quite a lot of detail. Basically, these were the things that we did when we were there. The the trip would include students staying for about five, six days in an indigenous community, which which was quite a culture shock last time. But, you know, I told the students, this is this is the stuff that college essays were written about. This is this is the life-changing experience that you have when you travel. And really, that was the highlight between between the host family stay and the Galapagos last time we went. Those were the two highlights. So, despite the fact that it's so different for the students to be staying with an indigenous host family, like they or some of them were not with an indigenous host family. Some were staying in town with, like, you know, an Ecuadorian family that lived in the in the village of Kotakachi. They really, really appreciated their host families. And even like a year later, some of the students were like, oh, I was just in in touch with my host family. So, it was really cool how we were there for such a short time, but but really, the Ecuadorian people had such a bond with with the students. And so, so that is a part of it. And and of course, touring Quito in that area and staying in the small community of Kotakachi, which I I really love. It's like nineteen fifties America. I never lived in the fifties. But I I think it's like nineteen fifties America, where people still say hi to people, and it's kind of low-tech, and everybody knows each other, and it's just a small-town vibe. It's it's really, really unique. So, I really enjoyed the the experience last time, and I I thought the students really did, too. I do not have a huge bunch of students clamoring for the Ecuador trip in the Galapagos, which is surprising, because I think it's gonna be amazing. But I I'd say maybe a dozen, and, you know, that's what I'm looking at, guesstimated. But sometimes you have a dozen people sign up, and then people figure out that you're going, and they're like, well, so-and-so's going, so maybe I'll go. And that's kind of what happened last time. I think I had fifteen, and then it became suddenly forty-eight or forty-seven. So, so hopefully, that doesn't happen this time. I I do like a small number. But but, yeah, it's pretty, it was a really good trip. So, hope to replicate that. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope. All right. Seeing none, I guess, the chair would consider a motion for approval of the 2023 Ecuador trip?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Madam. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Tammy. Now, any further discussion?
Well, I should also mention that it's, you know, depending upon how many people we have, we might have some participants from Hinkley or some of the surrounding districts, as we did in the past. So, that is a possibility.
That is wonderful, so that we can offer, you know, some things like that, too.
I hope the kids have fun.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carrie, it's ready to go.
Thank you. I will get started in September.
Right. Number seven, state of attorney to in-person learning review, Dan.
Yeah. The board has access to the entire plan. You know, the purpose of, we're not gonna go through this line by line, but is just to bring it back up to the board. You can see the revisions, or it was reviewed on kind of a monthly basis at a high level with the board last year, when we were dealing with more COVID situations. But the state does want us to keep it in front of the board and to review it every six months. Kelly, Fisher, and I did go through it and make updated revisions. There were a couple of items that board members saw that needed to be changed, so that was appreciated. And really, what this, the reason for this whole plan is in order for schools to secure the S R three funds, that each school had to develop a plan like this on how they were going to help return students to in-person learning. That was last year. And so, we have until 2024 to utilize these S R funds. So, that's why they want us to keep reviewing the plan and keep it in front of of the board. So, we don't need any sort of motion or anything. We just need the fact that it was reviewed by the board and and we move forward, I guess. I would be open to any questions or comments about the plan or about the upcoming school year. Obviously, we don't. I did have a question on whether or not M D E has put out anything in regard to guidelines or recommendations or things of that sort. I have not seen anything or heard of anything from any other superintendents or school districts. So, at this time, I think we're planning on starting the school year the way we ended the school year at this time. So.
Any questions of Dan? Seeing none, I guess, we'll move on. And number eight, enrollment presentation.
Yeah, I thought I would put together kind of an enrollment summary for the board, just to kind of get an idea of where we're at, where we were at historically. I want to let you know that Tammy Hermanson, myself, and Jody, I asked them to help me gather some of this information. And one of the interesting things is Jody is our Myers coordinator, has access to reports from M D E. And Tammy is our finance manager, and she has different reports from M D E. So, the the alignment wasn't, or the data wasn't aligned in M D E's reports. They were pretty close. So, we went back and just made sure that it reflected what the reports were saying. So, we did make some minor revisions to when this packet, or this presentation was originally. So. So, our fall enrollment was sixteen-ten. Go ahead, Shane. And at the end of the year, our enrollment was fifteen-fifty-four with sixty-eight early childhood students, and that was taken from Synergy on June fourth. So, throughout the year, and you'll see this historically, is that we have quite a few. Our enrollment is pretty high at the beginning of the year, and then as it is adjusted throughout the year, it it lowers historically. Adjusted, just go back one more, Shane. Adjusted A D M was fifteen-seventy-four. And I'll talk a little bit about A D M means average daily membership, and so that's how we get our funding. So, it's not just the number of students that come to our school on October or September, October. So, it's taken throughout the whole school year, and that's how we get our funding. I thought it might be interesting just to share, this is from the M D E state report of what kind of students come to our schools. And you can see the different demographics that we have, large majority being white, and then the other races that we have and the percentages. And then we do have the E L, English learner. We have eight of those students, special education, students free and reduced meals, and again, homeless counts as well. Those are, again, from the state reports. Those really fluctuated the last two years because of COVID. So, you know, just know that that probably is gonna be changing as well. So, this is the report that we went back and made sure that we had accurate reporting. And you can see historically, starting on the bottom is 2013 to the top. So, there was a enrollment study done in 2018, I believe, as part of the referendum, just to kind of get that study. And you can see over time, there's been a decline in enrollment, not only in Mora, but in other school districts and around the state and around the country. So, just because the the birth rates have changed throughout. But you can see how our high elementary school in 2013 had nine hundred and forty students. And, you know, last year, we were at eight hundred and fifteen. And then the high school, you can see, actually has fluctuated quite a bit as well. And the A L C fluctuates as well as well. So, I think the message here is, you know, overall enrollment is declining, not by a lot. But and and it's not stable, I guess would be the big thing. We are anticipating at the elementary school, our kindergarten, I think this year was ninety-four, ninety-five students. And now, this year, we're predicting at least a hundred and fifteen students. So. This is this is the same thing in a picture. So, you can see the total enrollment. Like I said, pretty stable. This time, it goes from right to left. So, 2013's on the right this time, and 2021 is on the left. So, a little bit of fluctuation, not a lot. This is why I talk about the average daily membership. And so, each each day, a student is enrolled, is their average daily membership, and that's what they use. And then students enrolled in alternative programs get an extra weighted, an extra A D M. So, if we're in targeted services or the A L C, they get suspension. And pupil units, our weighted pupil units. So, the state funds us for all the elementary students one point O unit, which is in the general formula, and seven through twelve students get an additional one point two units. And that's because the state believes that it costs more to educate secondary-level students. My guess would be for a couple of different reasons. One, they're taking many different courses. You're involving, you know, things like C T E. You're involving activities, different licensures of teachers, all those sort of things playing into that. And so, that's a little bit bigger, more of a reflection of how we actually fund our schools' average daily membership. So, you can see, over time, it's declined a little bit, but pretty steady. And so, same same sort of picture. Just some other, one of the other areas that affects funding is compensatory aid, sometimes referred to as free and reduced lunch counts. And so, we get a certain percentage of our compensatory funds. And you can see, in the last two years, when when meals were free, it became very difficult for schools to get forms in, because everybody ate for free. So, we we went down from forty-forties to thirty percent free and reduced, and that affected our compensatory funds by quite a bit. And so, we use those funds to fund some of our staff that work with helping these students. Again, these are just this enrollment study. Again, just some key points there that you see, and I just took a few snapshots. If you're interested in the whole thing, I could share it with you. Go ahead, Shane. This is the, a picture of the birth rates. Their prediction is for Knavik County. You can see we've had some ups and some downs and staying fairly flat after that is projected. And then K through twelve enrollment projections, all the way out to twenty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-nine. And you can see that the enrollment study predicted a increase in enrollment. They forgot to put the pandemic in there when they did the study. So, we don't see those numbers dip like they did. Again, this is their prediction of what it was or what it will be. And you can see there's a prediction that our elementary enrollment will go up. Our seventh and eighth grade enrollment will go up, and ninth and twelfth grade maybe will be flat to going down. Although, we haven't seen that yet. Non-residents that we serve, so these are the number of students that come into our school from the different schools. And you can see some of the the bigger numbers are the ones that are around us, or just like some of the students that we lose because the boundaries are pretty close.
So, this might be an obvious question, but why, how could there be a fraction of a student?
Well, because of those average daily memberships.
Okay, that's what I figured, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, because they might be part-time students, or they might.
Coming part of the year.
Good question.
Are some of them because of the A L C?
They could be because of that as well. Yes.
Where I will just imagine that that person.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's probably both of those reasons. And these are the students that live outside or that go to another school district. And I just highlighted Rumberger Special Ed, because, you know, they're actually our students. They just go to our cooperative, but we don't get the funding because that goes to Rumberger. So, there's eighteen students there. Okay. These are the online programs. Remember, last year, we had an online program at the high school and the elementary. And some, thirty-one students participated in some classes from two up to seven classes at the high school. And we had eight at the elementary participate, not the whole year, but partially. So. This is an interesting data point. You can see the number of homeschool students that decided to homeschool the last two years. My my guess is a large amount because of the pandemic.
Do we expect that to go down?
I would anticipate that that'll that'll come down, and we'll get some of those students back.
But it's not gonna be like half what it used to be.
It's hard to predict.
Until we have the kids in the school, it's gonna be impossible.
P S E O students, so you can see the number of students that we have participate in this. Most of the students are full, or excuse me, are part-time students, and most of them attended Ramsey County Pine Tech or St. Cloud Community College. This is an interesting number as well. Seven, we have seventy-five students enrolled in college within the schools. And, you know, why it's so interesting is, you know, these are the programs that keep students within our schools and not opting for P S E O. So, it's a very valuable and becoming more popular in schools. And I think it's an asset to our school district and to our students and families to be able to earn college credit. And some of them, instead of going to college for four years, can go for three years or whatever the case may be. So. Okay, Shane? That's it? No more slides. Any questions?
Any questions of Dan?
Any questions in the air? Nope, all right, moving on, number nine, if anybody had anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Just like to highlight the Gibson donations for June. We'll start with East Central Electric, Woods Time Library Contest, you know, a hundred dollars for the shop department, Carolyn Dennis Paquette, fifty dollars for the travel club, Ryan Mutinoff, five hundred for the turf field donation, Farm Bureau, a hundred for transportation field trips, Culvers, five fifty-nine fifteen for FFA, RG Mechanical, two hundred dollars for prom, and all the rest of the ones under the CDR for prom, Town and Country Insurance for fifty, Moore Dental Center for a hundred, Rixholm Version for twenty-five, State Farm Dan Johnson fifty, Timothy Stevens one hundred, Mordecai Green one hundred, First Citizens Bank one hundred, Morrie's Heartland fifty, East Central Vet fifty, Neighborhood National Bank one hundred, Genesis Spiralist one hundred, and North Post for fifty. Certainly would like to, you know, thank, you know, everybody for their generous donations, I mean, it, it truly does, it takes our village, and we are also thankful, you know, for that. Above, I mean, take notice of the employment requests, resignation requests, there are no retirements that I saw.
Scott, in reference to that, could I just ask a question? I don't want to item from the agenda, but under internal transfer, had the calendar of preschool teacher, the kindergarten teacher. I look back at enrollment history, and it seems like, to begin with, kindergarten has a larger number, and then within the month, it drops quite a bit. We have the right as a district, if enrollment were to drop, to move a teacher from one area to another, correct?
I believe we can reassign if needed.
We can?
Yeah. I don't think we're anticipating that to happen.
No, it just made me think of it, it just made me think of it, the transfer, that's probably what brought it to my attention. I just wanted to know if we could reassign if something were to happen.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Any other questions, or things for removal? If not, Chair entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as listed, so move by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, should we probably say aye? Aye, opposed, same sign, carries. Number thirteen, consider approval of.
Twelve. There it is, twelve.
Yes, I'm sure, yes, I just.
So this is, yeah, thanks Scott, this is just something that I, Tammy and I are going to put in front of the board, and thank you to the admin, that's okay, it's a budget calendar, and you know, we're in July, it's probably the slowest month of the year for, for budgets, but you know, staff are starting to receive an order of materials, begin looking at our LTF and capital budgets, and the admin actions that the administration, we're starting our budget implementation, and we'll look at enrollment like we just did closely over the summer. The school board did adopt the budget last, or last month, and then I put the fund balance policy in there, and it's per year review, and so if we want to look at changing that policy, then we'll get it in front of the policy committee, so, thank you.
Now, on number thirteen, consider approval of the admin agreement for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three.
Do you want me to talk about that?
Yeah, I'll just.
Okay. So the committee was Scott, Noel, Bob Jensen, and Bob Woods, and we were able to come to an agreement with the administration, in line with the other agreements that were approved by the board, so the committee is asking for approval from the board.
Is the Chair entertain a motion for approval of that, that negotiated agreement?
Someone?
Move by Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy, any further discussion?
I, I need to say something, and I'm going to apologize to the admin team, but we should, how do I write this? I did, I went to this meeting kind of unprepared, and I should have read over the contract to begin with, and because there was things in there that were in there from before that I didn't recall being in there, and one of them's like, you guys go into a national conference every other year, and I thought you had to get approval for it, I had that like stuck in my brain, and, which isn't true, I guess you guys get to go every other year. And I, I feel like I should have brought up these things in negotiation, so those type of things, and after reading it, totally going through it, I feel bad, but I feel like I need to vote against it at this time, because I, it's totally on me, I wasn't prepared, I remembered things the way I thought I remembered them, but I think, I was expecting it to go two sessions anyways, too, I could never imagine in an hour and a half, two hours, that we would get that done, so that's where it sits in my brain, and I have to vote against it, so I apologize.
Anybody else? Any questions?
I had just asked for it, and Dan's going to get it, I want to see what the total percentage increase was, not just salary, in comparison to all the other groups, negotiating groups.
And did you get that question answered?
Not yet.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know I said that the percentage raises were, you know, as you're right, just the new funds, and that was the only thing that I, you know, that I recall.
Yeah, there weren't too many other benefits negotiated in the.
No, and it was, yeah, basically the same, we had one clarification or something from the previous contract that we, I certainly remember, and there was a difference in the date, we just got that date corrected, but as far as health insurance, there was no change, yeah, I'm looking at you guys, I can't remember anything.
There was some retirement language that was added.
Oh, there was retirement language.
Didn't increase it too much.
Yeah, and that, yeah, a hundred percent agreed with, because if somebody wanted to retire at fifty-five, or fifty-six, then that was a smaller percentage, I think, because that made a difference.
Yeah, the numbers ended up as just how it was split up, five years over nine years.
My issue probably is, I didn't remember that you guys get seven thousand five hundred in your HSA as part of your health insurance benefits, that's just, it kind of like blew my mind and stuff, too, so I, you know, I, that's what, I should have read over everything here. My bad, my bad, it's all on me.
Other than, you know, Dan will certainly get back to you, but you know, those other ones, we don't have what the actual percentages were, but I said, the only one that was, an increase that I recall was the salary, you know, increase based on those percentages, which were at or below whatever the group had gotten, the other one was just a change in the language of, if somebody retired at fifty-six versus sixty, but the numbers would be all the same, give or take some very minimal percentage on what that might have been, so. All right. Any other questions? Is seeing none, we'll proceed, you know, to vote, all's in favor, should we probably say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay.
I, I just was waiting for that information.
Oh, okay, so, but if I have them correct, it's Matt, Scott, and Tammy with ayes, and Deb again with nays, is that, okay. All right, motion carries.
And again, I apologize, something like that.
Number fourteen, consider approval of resolution establishing dates for filing of affidavits of candidacy. Everybody, and it's just, we have to do every other year. Yep, this is just a file for candidacy, having a resolution for the board, so.
It's a formality.
Yes, Chair entertain a motion for approval of said resolution? Motion by Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can we increase in the future, not this time, but, you know, it costs fifty dollars to file for the county, and I think the city increased theirs to twenty, no, can we increase the liability?
That's a good question that I don't know the answer to.
Really good question.
Two dollars. I mean, it's, we should be covering our costs at a minimum, I think, you know.
Yeah, that's my point.
If it costs twenty bucks, and we're only collecting two, right? Doesn't make a lot of sense.
I mean, I hate to discourage anybody.
Right, no, exactly, like. It completely makes sense, that's a great.
It's a great point, really is.
It was really random when I ran, I'm like, two dollars, like.
And it used to be two dollars with the city, back when I filed for city council.
Right.
All those times.
I'll look into that, Bob, and I'll get back to the board.
Seems like an arbitrary number, yeah.
I know it used to be that way.
Sure, yep.
Okay, any further questions? All right, seeing none, and seeing that this is a resolution, we have to, we'll vote all vote, we'll start from here with Matt.
Aye.
Matt says aye, Bob?
Aye.
Bob says aye, Scott is aye, Tammy?
Aye.
Tammy is aye, Deb?
Aye.
Deb is aye, resolution passes five to nothing, so we're next on to number sixteen, please consider the first reading of the following policies that are listed there, numbers three oh two through seven oh nine F. You know, we have one open them in policy committee, but also in first reading for everybody else. So number seventeen, consider third reading and approval of the following policies, number seven sixteen, five oh one, five oh three, five oh nine, five oh nine F, we pulled number five oh four from the thing, I think we will take them all as one, you know, for approval, Chair entertain a motion for approval of the following policies, one, two, three, four, five of them that I listed. So, move by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matt. Any questions? And then I get the second third reading. All right, seeing none, all those in favor, should we probably say aye? Aye, opposed, same sign, carries. Next up, we've got board reports, board member being reports first. No, it's been kind of, but I thought you were raising your hand.
Oh.
No, otherwise, I would just finish up the one negotiation, I think that just leaves one more, you know, left to do, and we'll be finishing that up here the next month or so, that's just the third year, you know, seller part for superintendent, seeing the board reports, we'll move on to superintendent's update.
Can I say something really quick, sorry, just for anybody who's watching, just remember that our fall sports are going to start up in full swing, so our streets and road is going to be very busy in front of the high school, so anybody who is watching, just be careful, school's kind of in session.
School's home.
Okay. And the, the answer to the question of the two dollar filing fee Kelly found is set by the state, so it's, it's a secretary of state filing fee for school boards.
Two dollars.
So we do not have a power to change that.
Do you get that, Kelly?
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, a couple of quick things, you know, one, Rum River Special Ed Cooperative, Deb's on the board there, they talked about a couple different things, they, they got, received a grant to help all students in, I think, the eighteen to twenty-one range, with some more life skills, job skills type of training, and so I don't remember the specific name of the program, do you? Okay, but it's, it's a really awesome program to help students, and each school district's going to receive all the different materials and training to do this with their students, so that's pretty exciting, along with Rum River Special Ed is using some of their American Rescue Plan funds to help each district within, within the cooperative, get some additional training and evaluation on MTSS, which is multi-tiered system of supports, and that's really K through twelve, how do we help our students academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally, for students that need additional support, and that could be at either end of the spectrum, whether they need additional support in reading, or math, or behavior, things like that. So Kim Givens is from the U of M, she used to be the director at Scrib, and she's, you know, a statewide guru on, on the subject, so we're really looking forward to that. The other thing I'll touch on is student data privacy, I mentioned earlier the policy that that changed, the state legislature requires all of our vendors, our technology vendors, to make sure that they're protecting student data, and Shane actually has been working with me on trying to implement that and get everything up to speed in our district, and we'll have to align our policy, that five twenty-four policy, along with some other things, but we're lucky to have ECHMAC as a group, because they are some of the leaders in the state on this, so we'll be ready, and thank you Shane for, for being in touch with all that. Yeah, otherwise, we're back to school planning, and school board elections, like we mentioned, Kelly Fisher has been working on getting all those posted, and putting out some social media posts and things of that sort, as far as recruiting school board members who are interested in helping students achieve, and help operate our, our school district, like all of you do, so, thank you.
In reference to that, we'll put that onto the school board, or school website, that did an excellent job, and then referred it to MSRV.
MSBA, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, because that, it's really a good ad about being on the school board and what expectations are, so. Excellent job.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so that's all I have, that's all he has, and you, for your playoff, all over at Ben's, you know, out, so we'll have the reports there. Moving on to upcoming dates, remember, everything is listed in our packet, there's, I mean, everything is there, the mixed in, our next board meeting is August fourth fifth, there's the various new teacher books out, back to school workshops, substitute teacher professional workshops, candidate school board, candidate filing is open from August two to August sixteenth. It's about there, I did not see any correspondence, no come around at all, so then on the number twenty-one, on our board business, does anybody else have anything to bring up for the board? I've got one thing, we had received some notice from a great crowd of elders and associates, and we're looking at, it's in regards to when we bonded along, we had a bond approval of sixty-two point nine, we won the stolen sixty-one point two, there's been a change in legislature, which makes us, we are available at one point seven, you know, you know, it's not new, bond money is, is something, you know, we'll be looking at scheduling the work session, and go over all that, and questions answered, and all that, again, it's a nice, you know, issue to have, to say, okay, what, if, if you want to do, how does this affect it, how does it affect all of us, all of our students, the schools, everything, but look for that, I'll get, I'll make contact with Dan, we'll get that more scheduled hopefully before the next meeting, so. All right, moving on to board business, open forum, is there anybody else that would like to address? No, moving on, Chair entertain a motion for adjournment. Move by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody.
All in favor, should we probably say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, we are adjourned, yeah, seven thirty, thirty.